Good morning, my name is Roshi Dambul. Oh no, I speak English, I'm a lot. I am the president of the National E-Formal Traders Alliance of South Africa. We are a national body across the length and breadth of all nine provinces. The E-formal sector is a sector of over 6 million E-formal traders. And we are the sector that generates our own jobs. As you know, unemployment is very high and growing in our country. My point, sir, as you said, I should be shocked. I cannot be shocked because the livelihoods of our E-formal traders are affected by this very law. But I need to open and say, we acknowledge, we acknowledge as the E-formal sector, that health, that the health of people is very important. We acknowledge that smoking is bad. We acknowledge that it causes cancer amongst other issues that also causes cancer. But we are here to appeal to parliament. We cannot find jobs. We have been selling cigarettes, single cigarettes and packets of cigarettes, illegal product, a product that is not illegal and is a product that is an age-old custom across the world. All of our ancestors, many of them, I would say all, have been smoking. Yes, some have been affected, others not. There are people that have been smoking for 50 years and they still carry on. However, NITASA does promote that education takes place at a very young age, in the primary school already, that they should be taught the dangers of smoking. But the emphasis lies, smoking is not illegal. Illicit cigarettes are illegal. What is being done to stop that? Illicit cigarettes has been sold all over our country at a price that not even the legal cigarette taxpayers are paying. It is very important to understand that the E-formal traders livelihood, hundreds of thousands of them across the country, are dependent on the sale of the single cigarette. Those are the two points that we are very concerned about. The sale of single cigarettes and the display of cigarettes. Now, formal business does have the luxury of being able to have beautiful displayed evidence. We carry it, we carry it on us, in front of us, on a small box. How do we hide? Must we be criminalized by hiding it somewhere and then say, hey, I sell cigarettes, come, come, come? No, we want to know that we are adding great value to the economy of this country, that we are legal, arriving citizens. We believe in rules and regulations. But we are asking parliament to look at the E-formal sector. I thank you.
Alright, yes.
Thank yous, I'm a member of the lady, I'm a final level medical student in the University of the Kita. I support the bill because, thank yous, I am a member of the lady, a final level medical student in the University of the Kita. And I support the bill because the bill is a vital step forward in protecting the health of South Africans and securing a healthier future for our nation.
So, we will make an accommodation for MAMO because if you bring back the mic, we want to see you standing. Yeah, so, any other, no, no, the lady was on there, we are coming to the mic now. Okay, just as a caution, I didn't hear, some of my colleagues are now reminding me. When a member has made a statement, we will not say, ah, in the form of clapping. Because someone is going to say something different and then you are going to be tempted to hold that person. Let's just listen to the presentations as they are made, without our comments. We will clap hands at the end of the day when they are all expected. But for now, we will not say either. So, please, as the lady now got the mic, they're supposed to descend. Then you can settle down and then take her chair. But when she gives the jet, she's not going to back over to the chair in the car, she goes over to the edge. So, that's what I should mention there now. So, all other participants, we come into the mic, finish and then go to their place. So, you should descend with students back again.
Thank yous, I'm a member of the lady, a final level medical student in the University of the Kita. And I support the bill because, thank yous, I'm a member of the lady, I'm a final level medical student in the University of the Kita. I support the bill because the bill is a vital step forward in protecting the health of South Africans and securing a healthier future for our nation. Tobacco is a leading cause of preventable death in South Africa. It's responsible for lung cancer, heart disease, respiratory illness and many others. There are many clinical studies that show that smoking reduces the risk of the diseases are mentioned. And also, the World Health Organization has linked tobacco directly to 85% of lung cancers. And as a medical student, I have seen patients with this disease and it's very difficult to treat them. And South Africa, we do not have enough resources to treat these patients and not to mention staff. Every year, thousands of lives are lost and countries and others are affected by the secondhand smoke. And these deaths, they are very much unavoidable. The bill is crucial not just for reducing the amount of tobacco costs today, but for protecting our future generations. It includes provisions like payback, payback to reduce tariffs of being banned from legal products to that type of thing. Tighter restrictions on advertising to prevent the tobacco industry from propagating smoking to our children. With these measures, you can significantly reduce smoking initiation amongst young people, giving them easier to start in life. The bill also addresses the rising concern of electronic cigarettes, which a market has been saying are tragedies. However, they still pose significant health risks, including addiction. By eliminating these products, like the traditional tobacco, we protect our youth from fully integrating to a more active addiction. Additionally, expanding small, clean public spaces ensures that us, that mass smokers, especially children, are not exposed to secondhand smoke, better safeguarding our public. The bill is not just a policy, it's a commitment to people of South Africa, especially generations to come. By supporting the legislation, we are achieving health and well-being of us, of our citizens over the internet of the tobacco industry. We are ensuring that our children for up in a world where smoking is more or less acceptable and attractive option. Let us range together to create a tobacco free South Africa and protect the future of our children. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm a member of the lady, a final level medical student in the University of the Kita. I'm a member of the lady, I'm a senior medical student in the University of the Kita. I'm a member of the lady, I'm a senior medical student in the University of the Kita. That's the good thing about what I've heard from the seniors of the senior. Yeah, they were kind of so neat to cope with, but it's another one. Well, they're always fighting against me, they're always fighting against me, and they're always, they're not angry with me. So, they're not angry with me, they're not angry with me, they're not angry with me. But they're not angry with me, but they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. I think they're angry with me. Alcohol, that's the thing, that's the thing, that's the thing. Yeah, they're angry with me. Oh, so, I'm angry with me, I'm angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. But they're angry with me, they're angry with me. It's the thing, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. But they're angry with me, they're angry with me. And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me. Always me, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. So, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. But they're angry with me, they're angry with me. And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. 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 And they're angry with me, they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me. Good, they're angry with me, they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me. But they're angry with me, they're angry with me. They're angry with me, they're angry with me.
I have not heard the interpretation, what it says into English in this course. But they already have some clapping. I want you, please do not clap when it's interesting to you because it may be that when someone else says something else, you will not clap but do something else. Did I not ask for that? So, why they are clapping there? Don't do that, okay? It's happy for us, our fans is wanting to go.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Joanie, I'm a senior medical student and I'm a community activist in public school, George. I cannot stand here this morning and say to you that I'd either support this bill that I'm opposing or that I do not support the bill that I'm opposing. Yes, there are some things in the bill that is right and that needs to be addressed. But I have to say this morning, what weighs heavy is that some things need more attention than cigarettes. Cigarettes are wrong, I can say that, I don't stop. And it is true that it is not a good thing. But to tell you the truth, alcohol is much worse. Cigarettes do not drive you crazy, alcohol does. It is a much bigger problem, people are, children are being raped, young girls, which doesn't happen if they smoke cigarettes. You come here to us to give us this message. But I just want to say, and very irritating, is that the message that is probably hearing comes to us so late, hence the fact that this bill is so empty. We don't, we are not for war in time to be, to attend these sort of meetings. Also, you come to us for this bill, but actually it seems like you've already decided what you're going to do. It seems like a waste of time. We stand here, we give our input, you go back, you do exactly what you want. Parliament knows exactly what to say to please us. They mention us like the poison in this bill, but they do nothing for us. Again, here we stand on a Sunday, we're supposed to be in church, that's what our community needs. But we waste our money and our time by being here trying to add input about things that you've already decided. It's not just that some of my courses are, is actually elegant, it's elegant in person. And I just want to say that there's more important things to listen to than cigarettes. I thank you.
Thank you Chair, and Joyce, I'm looking for the opportunity to present to you today. So, I am from Western Cape, I'm here and I decided to work for sex. My name is Professor Pari Valonia. I currently am a healthcare consultant to humanist companies nationally and internationally, including for the public side of Africa. I'm adjunct professor at the University of Western Cape. As scientists and a healthcare professional, I am going to speak about the research related to these non-combustible nicotine products. For example, nicotine pouches, e-cigarettes and heat-not-burning products. I object the vote in terms of the non-combustible nicotine products. Please, on the research, I will present you today. So, in December last year, the United States Food and Drug Administration, the FDA, authorized a product for a nicotine pouch. Now, the FDA is the world's leading authority in the renovation of these non-combustible nicotine products. They also authorized 50% e-cigarettes and e-cigarettes. And this was based on scientific evidence and the benefit to public health. Now, the FDA uses this same parameter called APPH, which stands for the Appropriate Protection of Public Health. Now, this standard takes, incorporates the net benefit to the public. And it takes this into account by taking the benefits and the risk of these non-combustible products to the population as a whole, including the, I would emphasize, that the use of these non-combustible nicotine products in the youth has already incorporated in this parameter, in the net benefit to public health. So, I would like to present three aspects of research very briefly. The first evidence is the toxicological evidence produced by the FDA. Now, for example, and this was clarified to me in the product, but for example, the heat-not-burning product. Now, the heat-not-burning product has a small amount of tobacco in it. The tobacco is heated and not burnt. So, because the capsule of combustion, the FDA reported that there was a 82% less potential carcinogen in aerosol of the heat-not-burning product compared to a combustible cigarette. I emphasize 92% less potential, sorry, 82% less potential carcinogens. The FDA also reported that there was 92% less resuscitated toxicity in the aerosol of the heat-not-burning product compared to 31 combustible cigarettes marketed in the US. So, in conclusion, the FDA indicated that there was 67%, 60%, actually 60%, 99% less toxicity in the heat-not-burning product compared to combustible cigarettes. The second evidence.
You have not completed because you have four minutes on just one part. You have taken four minutes, you have only one. Summarize the two on the last minute, okay?
Okay, so, the, I'll make two little regulations. South Africa, likely FDA should create a separate category for the regulation of these non-combustible nicotine products. They should not be treated the same like the chemical does. And this is based on the evidence by the FDA. The second recommendation is that, I was going to present to you the information about the public collaboration. However, if non-combustible products or the e-cigarettes are more effective than nicotine replacement care, which is claimed again, based on good rights, based on the public collaboration as reported, as the world's leading authority on the systematic review of the evidence. And, which is more effective, and the public collaboration also reported that the adverse events, the nicotine adverse events were similar between non-combustible products and e-cigarettes. Now, based on this evidence, I believe that we have a model of creation to promote the use of the non-combustible nicotine products to adult smokers who get e-cigarettes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Vera Faba. I represent the public order of the foreign. We are a collection of foreign professionals, we're mainly working in the same. The relationship between tobacco use and increased prevalence of oral diseases, particularly on cancer and periodontitis, is well documented and understood. The manifestation of oral diseases linked to tobacco use significantly impacts the quality of life, health and well-being of affected individuals. Some individuals do have this, that causes significant link between oral disease and several other impacts related to smoking. Smokers are a heavy person of complications related to major oral or minor oral surgery due to the effects that smoking has on the wound area, significantly contributing to the cost of care. The public order for supports today with several recommendations. Early act is only effective to the extent that those centers task its enforcement and power to pursue. Therefore, encourage lawmakers to ensure effective support to build all government capacity to implement and enforce the law. The illicit tobacco industry continues to undermine population health efforts and all efforts needed are needed to stem the tide. All healthcare facilities should be designated, no, uh, smoke-free zones with designated smoking zones and agreed to steps from the main duties in public areas. The public order for appreciates economic implications associated with the lead on tobacco products, but this is not the intention of this bill. This bill seeks to regulate and control the safe marketing and use of these products. As such, this is a part of the communication of the public display of tobacco products, the regulation of the marketing through the use of appealing packaging and the need for a graphic depiction of the health effects, including oral health effects of tobacco use with a clear warning label on the packages of all tobacco-related products. The cost of tobacco use far exceeds the amount of tax revenue generated through the connection of taxes. It's a medical question of which is paid by the consumer. The cost and the concentration of tobacco, the majority of economically vulnerable consumers who do not only get their financial care, but their lives in there. It is also a note that vulnerable populations spend this medical question of their income in tobacco leading to economic hardships for themselves and their family. It's like, thank you, it's like, many governments with the lives of its people in its hands, needs to weigh in consultation as we are doing here, the benefits and risks that may or may not be attributed to the, to the implementation of laws in the public interest. While we need to forever balance the public interest and those of our society in life, it remains a challenge. However, we call on our lawmakers to remember, there is no price for a human life cut short by tobacco use and that the most valuable unit of any kind in the economy is a healthy and productive society. Thank you.
Good afternoon, colleagues, good afternoon to the chairperson, also the committee on public health, thank you so much for organizing this. My name is Pala, not Pala Pala. I am from the organization for care, eh. We are looking into the illicit aspect of tobacco trade. The biggest concern that we have in the bill is that on section eight, particularly point two, it's not really addressing the aspect of illicit trade. I feel that's what we need to be looking into. There are three points or three things that we thought that could be added to the bill so that it becomes a stronger bill. The first one we're looking at, if the bill does, does express the illicit tobacco trade. We looked at it, we did find that it is really explicitly, you know, indicates there is trade. Despite the, the significant impact that illicit trade has on the health and also on the economy as well, some of the characteristics that we've mentioned there now. Number two, whether to see that there needs to be stricter regulations and legal tobacco, on legal, illegal tobacco products, that we know that there are few and few of those illicit tobacco trading. But it's also, also remind you that, remember when it happened, that we had the lockdowns. Now, all those lockdowns, that those people created, the huge market for illicit trade happened. Because remember, tobacco or smoking was not a, you know, what do you call it?
It's a guideline, not this, yes, right?
No, yes, yes, the, 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 the health department was using, right? And there was a 2T plus of illicit tobacco trade. Now, that created a lot of health problems for people today. Also, we know that we're going from 28, we even assumed it was about 18 million due to taxes from the agency. We're literally talking about the other taxes that we have, whether like your company tax or in our system, we get. The fact, submission is that there is no key strategy in the bill for collaboration between, now, it's law enforcement and every new authority to curb the illicit tobacco trade. So, there is no clarity that in the bill that can say that this is how to curb the illicit tobacco trade. Chairperson, any information that, you know, the research that was done by the World Health Organization on, you know, the number of people that are, it's about 8 million of people in the world. We have been learning about South Africa. However, if we were to curb the illicit flow of tobacco in the country, what we are delivering from the same report that you are mentioning, it's saying that 164,000 of people are actually dying as a result of those illicit tobacco trade, right? So, which means those tobacco trade, tobacco, tobacco products are killing people and there's a contribution and that's about 2% of them. But if we were then able as a nation to then work together with the law enforcement authorities as yourselves, as the committee and every authority in life to do that, then we can produce massively the number of people that are actually dying from those illicit tobacco trades that are harmful to the society. Thank you very much.
Chair, good afternoon to you and to your committee, thank you for the opportunity. I do not support the bill, as you know by now. My name is Sosa, I represent the tobacco, legal tobacco value chain from the farmers throughout. Chair, I come to you in a respectful approach to try and assist you, as I always do to witness the bill. I always come back and say, Chair, with respect.